This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the November 16th, 2020 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the tonight's agenda?
This is Counselor Wagner. I'm asking if you are still planning on having under new business, item 13B, in-person council meetings discussion?
I think we are still planning on having that discussion, maybe in light of the closers starting beginning Wednesday, maybe staff could fill us in on what those look like. And so we'll keep it on the agenda if you don't mind.
I don't mind. I'd like to actually have a rather thorough discussion. I'd like to find out more about the intent, et cetera.
Okay, anything else on the agenda tonight? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
This is Counselor Wagner. I'll accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor McNair.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. There are no presentations tonight. I do not have anything to report from my seat tonight. So we'll move right into council committee meeting reports. I did have a report. I attended the senior board meeting on Friday morning. And it was a good meeting. They're having some issues with health problems with the cook. And so that's been going on for the last two weeks, I think, now. But the extra staff is really stepping up and helping out in the kitchen and making sure the meals get out okay. And so I have that to report. Also, the board approved an application of some aluminum step treads to be applied to the steps of the scout cabin, both front and back, and the wheelchair ramp. And Alan Hines is going to help out with that project. And so the board did approve the purchase of that material. So that's going to take place, hopefully sometime this next month. So that'll make it a lot safer, especially during the winter months. That's about all I have from that committee. Are there any other committee meeting reports? Okay, we'll move on to other, any topics from the floor tonight?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move right into the public hearing. City Council Public Hearing Intent to Withdraw Territory from City Limits. This public hearing is now open at 7:05 PM on November 16th, 2020 for consideration of the city's intent to withdraw territory from city limits. The public hearing will follow a certain order. It is staff will present a staff report of the proposal. Next testimony will be allowed for those in favor of the proposal, following with testimony in opposition of the proposal, then comments that are neither in favor nor against the application. Staff will then have an opportunity for rebuttal. No new evidence will be allowed during rebuttal. Therefore, it is important that you clearly and concisely state your full testimony at the time you are allowed to speak. Each speaker will step up to the dais and clearly state his or her name and mailing address for the record prior to your testimony. No speaker will be interrupted except for questions by city council members. No testimony will be entered into the record if spoken from the position of the general audience. Those participating in the hearing will have the opportunity to request a continuance to address any new evidence submitted in favor of the application, or if time does not allow testimony to be completed at this hearing. If no continuance is requested, those participating will have the opportunity to request that the record be kept open for at least seven days to allow for a written rebuttal of testimony presented at this hearing. Otherwise, the hearing will be closed and the matter will be returned to the hearing body for deliberation. Does any counselor have an ex parte contact to declare? Does any member of the hearing body have a conflict of interest to declare? Does anyone wish to challenge a counselor's right to consider this application? And now the city planner will now submit a report. So yours, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Fellow council members, Matt Street presenting tonight for staff. This item was before you on November 2nd, 2020. And the city council at that time initiated a de-annexation of three properties from the city. And that started a multi-step process that is outlined in ORS 222. More specifically, that process involves three steps. The first step is for the city council to adopt a resolution of intent to withdraw the three properties. That was done in the second. The second step is the hearing we're holding tonight, right now, where we're requesting more input from the public. And it gives the city council an opportunity to modify the boundaries of the de-annexation if they so desire. And then there's a lot of specific items from state law that has to be wrapped into the motion. And so the motion that's in our staff report takes all that into consideration. Step three is to hold a final hearing on an adoption of the ordinance. And we have that tentatively scheduled for December 7th. So with that, we, at the last hearing, heard from Mr. Martinez, who owns two of the three properties that were to be removed from the city, or at least that we're discussing removing from the city. And he expressed some frustration with the fact that we hadn't spoken with him before the hearing. And so in order to remedy that, staff reached out to Mr. Martinez a number of times. But as of yet, we have not spoken with him. He didn't return the emails or the phone calls that we sent out. So I haven't spoken with him at all. However, I do want to make a point of clarification regarding this. The state does not require the city to gain permission from a property owner in order to de-annex that property owner's property from the city. However, ORS 222 does explain that a citywide election regarding the possible de-annexation is required if certain requirements are met. Now, those requirements are fairly extreme, and I'm not sure how we would ever see them met here. We would essentially have to have 15% of the electors in the entire city request an election on this item, which would be essentially 342 different people writing us a letter requesting an election of this de-annexation rather than a direct action from our city council. Obviously, we haven't had that happen. And so a citywide election is not required. However, having that said, it's still under the prerogative of the city council to modify the boundaries if they so desire tonight. However, I just want to make it clear that that would be at the prerogative of the council, not at the prerogative of a single property owner. So with that, staff has a recommended motion for you. And it's filled the stuff that comes straight out of ORS, and I'll read it here for you. Our suggested motion is this, that the city council has determined that it is in the public's best interest to de-annex the three properties identified in our staff report. An election regarding removal of the property from the city will not be required because formal requests do such were not submitted. And lastly, as such, the city council will hold a final hearing to adopt an ordinance formally withdrawing the property to the city on December 7th. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Matt. Testimony will now be heard from those in favor of the application. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please step forward stating your name and mailing address for the record, then proceed with your testimony. Testimony will now be heard from the, from those opposed to the application. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please step forward stating your name and mailing address for the record. Then proceed with your testimony. Would anyone like to speak who is neither in favor nor opposed to the application? Please step forward, stating your name and mailing address for the record, then proceed with your statement.
Stephanie, have we muted Mr. Norman? Or did he mute himself?
He mutes himself.
Okay, I was just making sure we didn't have anyone closed off if they wanted to talk.
Nope.
Final call for testimony. Does anyone else wish to submit oral testimony before the applicant has the final opportunity to respond? Would the applicant like to respond to any of the facts introduced by those opposing the application and any statements made regarding the proposal? Is there a request by any of the participants to the hearing body to continue this hearing to another date and time to consider new evidence or because of the complexity of this proposal? Therefore, this public hearing is now closed to testimony and new evidence. At 7:12 PM. Now time for city council deliberation. Counselor Wagner.
So I just have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if this is or was the correct time. So I understand that Mr. Martinez has not been in touch with staff. And I heard you say, and I see in writing, that you reached out several times. Did you speak with anyone at the phone number to leave a message? Or did you simply leave a message at the phone number provided?
I sent an email to Mrs. Martinez because I didn't have Mr. Martinez's email. And Mrs. Martinez responded quite promptly and gave me Mr. Martinez's email. And then I reached out to that email a couple of different times. I didn't try to make a phone call to the Martinez family. I don't have their phone number. I'm sure we could have found that in the records on the water bills or whatever else, but we just did email.
And we didn't send him a letter or anything by post office? I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify for myself that we did what we were required or that the city did what the city was required to do in order to try to reach out to someone who had voiced a concern about this.
Sure. No, I can send him a letter this week. That's not a problem.
And I don't want to hold anything up unnecessarily, but I certainly want to make sure that it doesn't put us at risk because he says he didn't know about that. And I'm sorry, you know, I'm being very risk averse here, and I apologize.
Yeah, we'll send him a letter this Thursday because he still would have a chance to show up at the next hearing scheduled on the 7th, and he can still speak at that time. So I'll send him a letter this week. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Well, just a point of clarification, what exactly is a requirement?
There really aren't any.
So we met him then?
For us to notify him, there aren't any requirements for that.
Any other? Any others? Go ahead, Stephanie.
I would argue that in emailing his spouse and her responding, we have notified them. I, obviously, a letter would be good too, but she responded. And if they're not communicating, that's not a task of the city to assure that that happens.
Hey, Matt.
Is there?
Did your email say that there was going to be another hearing tonight?
It didn't. I was just trying to arrange a time to meet with him. However, he was on the phone last time when we talked about the fact that there was another hearing, so he was aware of that.
I don't believe we talked about a date for another hearing because we hadn't even passed the first phase of this.
Well, making the date for tonight's hearing was part of the motion previously, so it was part of the discussion. I mean, either way, I'm more than happy. I'll triple team them. I'll send an email to Mrs. Martinez. I'll send one to Mr. Martinez, and I'll send a letter, and all of them will say the same thing. And I'll put more meat in it this time. I'll talk about our basic talking points, why we think it's a good idea for them to de-annex the city and how it's going to be favorable to them in three different ways. And I'll include all of that. And then I'll certainly mention in there that there's another hearing on the 7th if they can attend, if they so desire.
Right. I ultimately don't think they're going to have a big issue with it. I think personally, it's just, and I understand we don't have to do it by law, but sometimes the right thing to do is still the right thing to do. So I appreciate your effort in trying to reach out to them.
Counselor Webb, you had a, go ahead.
Yeah, Matt. So I think the Martinez property is over five acres, somewhere in there. So how does that affect our buildable lands inventory? Because it's in the flood. Some is in the floodway, some floodplain, I assume. But so what's the effect on buildable lands? Does it really make a difference to us?
Well, it by itself probably doesn't make that much of a difference. When you do a buildable lands inventory, you can actually exclude property that has some kind of to development, and that would certainly category. You were right the first time. It's actually in a floodway, which is even far more extreme than a floodplain. And our rules wouldn't allow them to build in a floodway, and so it's basically unbuildable. But the idea is taking away this property and the timber property are all pieces that go into filling in the area by the school for the future UGB change. It's more of a collective thing. I mean, any one property, even the Martinez's, isn't going to make or break anything, but it's going to help us reach that additive level. Because if we can't make all this land change essentially a swap, and by that I mean changing the UGB, if we can't change the UGB with a swap, then we have to use a different method through the state processes, which is far more onerous, and we wouldn't be able to meet. And so we couldn't change the UGB. So essentially, the only way we can change the UGB is if we can muster up enough property to swap around to make it even. And that's why every little bit we get helps, including the Martinez's. Good question.
Any other discussion? Counselor wish to make a motion to move forward?
This is Counselor Wagner. The city, the motion that I would like to make is that the city council has determined that it is in the public's interest to de-annex the three properties identified in the staff report. An election regarding the removal of the property from the city will not be held because written requests for such an election were not filed. As such, the city council will hold a final hearing to adopt an ordinance formally withdrawing the properties from the city on December 7th, 2020.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor McNair. Was that an affirmative vote?
Yeah, aye. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Consent agenda for approval. Library Board Meeting Minutes for October 2020.
This is Counselor Wagner. I move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance as presented.
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor McNair.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consent agenda for approval. City Council Meeting Minutes for November 2nd, 2020. There's no discussion with any council person wish to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for November 2nd, 2020. Counselor Webb.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie? Try it again, Stephanie. We can't hear you.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor McNair.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business tonight? If not, we'll move right into new business. Staff report, work session schedule. Page 13.
This is a staff report brought to you by me. Asking you guys to schedule a work session to discuss priorities and follow with the first quarterly city administrator meeting. Estimated time for this is two hours total. I also sent you guys an email requesting dates that do not work for this, so I can schedule it in that capacity. And we also have a request for a work session for downtown parking. We're requesting that council schedule a work session to view the proposed downtown zone parking standards prior to them being presented at the December 7th meeting for a hearing. Estimated time needed for this meeting is 30 minutes.
Stephanie, could you remind us of those dates in the quarterly workshop meeting that staff could not attend?
I have December 8th and the 21st through 31st. It says the 4th in the staff report, but that is a typo.
Okay, thank you. I got the email, but I just didn't have it in the, right here. Was it, was it next week, Thanksgiving week? You were out of town, Susan? Or was it this week you were unavailable?
It was actually last week.
Last week? Yeah.
And I have postponed my next vacation in December, so that cleared up a lot of time.
I wonder if we should, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Are we going to schedule the downtown parking first?
Well, that, that's what I was just going to suggest because we need to prepare for the December 7th, next council meeting. So I recommend we do take care of that first.
I agree.
Would that be done? Could that be done virtually or down in City Hall? Virtually?
Yeah, we were thinking virtually. You would all get it via email and just discuss it. Discuss that what is on paper is what you discussed with Matt and wanted to be brought forward to the hearing.
What date will that come out?
I could do it this Wednesday, but not till about 7 o'clock.
Dale, why do you look perplexed?
Well, you said we're going to do it by email, right? Did I hear that correctly?
So you get the document via email, but you discuss it in Zoom meetings?
Okay.
Yeah.
It made it sound like you get emails, and then we're going to email back and forth our discussion. I don't think we can do that, so.
No, go.
Yeah, I learned something, didn't I, Stephanie?
Yep, well done.
Well, my question would be, how much time does Matt need to revamp it if something comes up?
If you guys do it on, did I hear somebody suggest on Wednesday?
Yeah.
So if we did it on Wednesday, he'll be here Thursday, so he could amend it if you guys decided to amend it.
And that gives enough time for notice?
Yes, because we won't be discussing it until December 7th. So it should be plenty of two weeks.
I'm good with Wednesday.
At 7?
About the rest of the council, are they good with Wednesday evening at 7?
I'm good.
Wednesday, the 18th at 7?
I don't care.
Looks like we're going to have a Zoom meeting or a council or this workshop meeting on parking at 7:00 PM Wednesday. Looks like we're gonna have a Zoom meeting or a council or this workshop meeting on parking at 7:00 PM Wednesday. Okay, how about the city administrator quarterly meeting workshop?
And priorities?
Priorities, yeah.
The staff have a proposed date?
What's that, Councilor Webb?
I was just curious if staff had a proposed date, because they know the calendar better than the rest of us.
About November 30th?
Monday?
I could do it then.
What time? 6 to 8?
Can you make it, JR, at 6 o'clock?
Are we gonna do it in person or phone in?
I have to be phoned in on the new rules.
It's worth noting that the new rules do not apply to municipalities.
We can do it in person, and if we choose to.
And while the priority work session could be held virtually, I would hesitate to have an executive session over the internet.
I would like to have this discussion because I I would... We're having a discussion tonight about meetings in person, so I'm... I'd like to have that discussion, and in all honesty, I hear what you're saying about concerns about having this meeting, an executive session on the internet, but there are ways to protect that. I know that you can you can seal off a room and have it only those people allowed in that room. I'd like to have that conversation before we make a decision on whether we're gonna do in person or not.
Mayor Hobart?
Go ahead, Counselor.
I'm good with it either way.
Are you all available on that date, and then we can have the discussion of if it's Zoom or in person? Down the agenda?
I am, that's fine.
Okay. So what time did we say though? 6?
6 o'clock. November 30th, 6:00 to 8:00.
Got it.
Okay. Moving on. In-person council meeting discussion. How about that? So, question for Stephanie, whether new restrictions put on by the governor that will not affect our ability to meet in the chamber?
That is correct. As of now, the current restrictions do not affect municipalities or meeting for your public meetings. And that is from the governor's office.
Okay. And the the restrictions, I believe, for the entire state from the governor are from this Wednesday, the 18th of November till December 2nd for two weeks, and then it's for one month in Malnoma County, from what I understand. So I looked at the numbers today in Columbia County, and there was since March for today's positive cases are 324.
There were five more today.
Five more?
In Columbia County.
Columbia County. I think there's a total of 12 in our zip code. There are some positives within our community. I think in the county of those 324, there's, I believe, 10 hospitalizations. There's been two deaths. My personal opinion is I think we're doing good in our little community, and I think if we follow the social distancing and the wearing of the mask, and if you feel ill at all or have a temperature, if you're sick, you shouldn't just... You should just stay home. I look forward to getting back in the chamber with both our workshops and our next council meeting on the 7th, and we proved we could do it in our last workshop on the parking. And it's my recommendation that we should just... I'd like to go back to chamber.
Why? This is Councilor Wagner. Why? What is different about being in chambers? I'll let you answer the question. How about that?
Well, it's just I... You know, I can't see the people on the phone, and it's just easier for me to be in person and to communicate. I'm at a safe distance, and it just is a more meaningful meeting for me, and I... I... We've done this for many months now, and I think it's time to move forward and and get back to the chamber. I think we've...
Can I ask a question there?
Sure can.
Since Councilor Wagner's asking you why, I'm asking why not?
Okay. First of all, I am concerned about the numbers continuing to rise, the fact that we do have cases in Vernonia that it puts people at risk, and in addition, it excludes the vast majority of our constituency from being able to participate in a meeting based on occupancy of that room with six feet bubbles around every person. Currently, I don't believe that we have six feet between people. If you add pretty much anybody into the audience, you're limiting it and disallowing people from attending because they can't by the six-foot bubble.
How many people are attending these?
I don't believe that that is a viable or reasonable argument. What happens if people do want to attend? You're gonna have to say, "No, I'm sorry, there's something interesting on the agenda tonight, but you can't attend because we don't have occupancy allowed for you." I mean, let's think about swearing in. You're gonna be able to have two people in there.
I think it's a false analogy.
It's not an analogy, it's a fact. You know...
Susan, we... Susan, I attended the the senior board meeting Friday morning at 10 o'clock. We were in the Birkenfield Room. Before we even entered the room, our temperature was taken, and everyone had a mask on. Everyone was six feet apart, and there was there was at least 10 people in the room. Everyone was six feet apart, and it's it's the new norm. And people are used to it. I'm sure that if people were sick, they wouldn't be there at that meeting.
What about the people who don't know that they're sick? That's part of the issue here, you know?
Well...
Go ahead.
It'd be really easy for us to get a thermometer and have staff take their temperature before they come in the room. You could do that.
That excludes people who are asymptomatic, which we know are people who spread this regularly. So here's a question. If I said that by staying home or sheltering in place for a period of time, that would prevent you from getting cancer, would you stay home and isolate yourself? I'm asking everyone. I'm not just asking the mayor. It's... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what?
Can we return to the original question that you asked, since you've been speaking quite a bit, and the mayor's been speaking quite a bit? I'd like to offer this. It's much more conducive to conducting business if you meet in person. And we have a responsibility to the community to do the best that we can.
We have a responsibility to the community to make our meetings available to them as well, which they can't do if we are enforcing the six-feet rule.
Stephanie, is there a rule for government business that we have to limit the amount of people in there if they're wearing masks? Because my understanding, if you wear a mask, you're stopping the spread. Otherwise, what's the point of a mask?
I'm sorry, your question, do we have to keep the six feet if they have a mask on?
Right. I thought you said there was a government waiver.
Well, the waiver is for the number of people that we have in attendance. We still have to require or encourage people to be six feet apart if they're not in the same family or cohort.
All right, so if we measured out the seats and put X's on them, I imagine we could get five or six people in there. That's probably more than show up typically, and couldn't they always call in and be on speaker as well?
I'm sorry, Josette or Stephanie, could you answer that, please?
There might be a way that I could have a phone in there so that they could listen to us, but they wouldn't be able to participate, because I wouldn't be able to man the program like I do here at my desk. But they could submit testimony or come down and attend in person. They could still listen.
Counselor Wagner?
What if you have a council member who feels uncomfortable or is ill? Or a staff member who is uncomfortable or is ill?
They can do it from home.
I'm sorry?
I said they can do it from home.
But I'm understanding that you can't. That's what Stephanie just said.
We've done it in the past. I've done it. I've done it several times when I was over hunt.
What Stephanie just said is that if somebody wanted to participate by phone, they could listen but not participate in the meeting.
Okay, so I'm hearing two questions. Would you like me to answer both?
Yes, please.
I could create a go-to meeting where we could use the phone in the council chambers to call into, and I could let the public listen. With my new laptop, I might be able to man the station, if you will, and allow counselors to speak. I don't know if that is something I can do or not. I have not tested it. To address Bruce's comment, correct. We have had counselors attend meetings from using a phone, and they called in. However, that was one person using one line, not multiple. And to address the third question, which is not going to be popular, and this is not a feeling that I have. I am not one way or the other. I'm just responding to it. If the majority of council wants to have the meetings online, then that's how council will have their meetings. If the majority of council wants to have them in person, then that's the way they would have them. It's just... I'm just stating the fact, not my opinion.
Josette?
So I have to be kind of honest. Being immune compromised, if you guys decide to have your council meetings in the council chamber and invite five more people, I will not show up. I can't afford to show up with no immune system to a meeting with that many people in one room. I'd have to be on the in-call one. I mean, I'd have to call in. That's just me personally, because I'm on something that suppresses my immune system. So if we're doing it where we're gonna allow kind of the maximum amount of citizens in there, that's too many people for me to risk exposure to, to not just be the one person that needs to call in. I'm just... And I don't want that to dissuade you guys, but don't be surprised if I'm a phone in my spot talking at you.
Okay, thank you, Josette.
Well, I can certainly appreciate that fact, Josette, and I respect your situation. That's what we have to do, and that's what we have to do. We're doing that right now, so.
Counselor Webb?
Well, and that... Josette's issue there, that brings up an awkward situation, because we don't know what our attendance will be at any of her meetings. She could be there and might have to leave, so. Yeah, I think these are still difficult times for us. It does puzzle me, though. We do go and have our workshops, and we're fine with that, and then because we know we aren't gonna get attendance, but or some of us are...
I'm sorry, I would object to your statement that we're fine with this. Some of us are not fine with that and have reluctantly attended.
How does the school board have their meetings?
The meetings are held virtually...
I don't know. Are they meeting in person?
I'm sorry, Josette, what?
I don't know. Is the school board meeting in person, JR?
That's what I'd like to know, because they have a huge gym. That's what I'd like to know, because they have a huge gym. I'm just wondering if that is even possible.
No, we are not meeting in person. We do Google meetings.
For the month of December, I just looked up, St. Helens is still doing Zoom as of right now. I don't know if that matters, what other towns are doing, but.
Portland's doing theirs.
In person?
Yes.
Okay.
They have been the whole time that I'm aware of, anyway.
Are they televising it out to people, or?
I don't have that information, Josette, sorry.
Okay.
Um, I've seen a meeting that they did that was on the internet, and they were doing it by way of, uh, virtually. So, I don't know how come that is.
What is, what is the, can we get a general consensus of what the council wants to do in the near future?
I think we've all spoke, I think we should just vote on it, and that's the way it rolls.
Okay, everyone ready to take a consensus vote?
Yeah.
You might want to ask for a motion, just so it's more formal that you guys decided one way or the other.
Yeah. Anyone like to make a motion to move back into chamber?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
For our meetings?
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we vote to move back to chamber for our next workshop and December 7th, in-person, regular council session meeting from there on after.
I'll second that.
You call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
I'm a nay.
Counselor Wagner?
Nay.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that we make sure that we have alternatives for those people who are not able, or unwilling, for whatever reason, to attend in person, including your staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made to have our ulterior.
So, I got Counselor Wagner made a, a motion to make alternatives available for other means for those who cannot attend in person to attend.
And Counselor McNair, second to that.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. ODOT, site, Green Bridge, report update.
Okay, so I sent you guys an email with my city administrator report and my statement to ODOT regarding the Green Bridge. Did you guys receive that?
Yes.
But I'll give you a rundown of what it is. So, the mayor and I attended online, like a call-in call for local municipal, municipality representatives to hear and put in comments for the 2024 through 2027 STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Plan. And so, basically, it wasn't the kind of meeting we thought it was gonna be. It basically told us, they wanted from us to hear what categories we think the $2 billion funding should go into, whether it's fix-it money, which would fix aging infrastructure, or enhancement, which would make roundabouts and things like that, or if it was non-highway safety, which would be pedestrian bicycle safe routes to schools, or if it would just be highway, which is mostly metro, or baseline, which is keep the money how it's currently funded. So, along with that, um, there's, there was an open house. So, what's weird is the call-in was on the 3rd, right after your guys' meeting, and then the statement was due by 5 o'clock today, before your next meeting. So, I put in, um, a ranking for us that was fix-it, which is the aging infrastructure, the non-highway safety, which is pedestrian bicycle safe route to schools. Then I put in enhancement, which is roundabouts and things like that, then highway, which is metro, and last baseline, which is kind of how we, I basically took all the decisions we've made in the last few years as a city and ranked according to that. So, I also submitted a comment specifically to the Green Bridge. So, I did a lot of research on how many times the Green Bridge, which its ODOT name is the Mile Bridge, don't ask me why, has been in their reporting and what those reports have said. So, in that email I sent you, basically, I told them that the city believes that most of the funding from the STIP should go to the fix-it category to fix deteriorating infrastructure within the state's transportation system. But the city is writing on behalf of a current project, the OR47, the Haylen River Bridge, um, project. And I stated that it's been on and off the STIP since the early 2000s, following the flood event of December 7th, or December 2020, 2007, in December, the bridge was removed from the STIP. It was once again added for the STIP for minor repair in 2021, 2022. We're writing to request that the bridge be replaced with wider travel lanes and safe pedestrian pathways. So, then I outlined for them all of the ratings that they had given it. And in 2011, it got marked as structurally deficient and in poor condition. And then in 2016, and it continues to this day to be marked poor condition, structurally deficient, and in 2016, it also got marked as seismically vulnerable. So, I said, "Our community has been participating in the Northwest Act meetings, those are the Area Commission on Transportation meetings, and we've repeatedly shared that the bridge is deteriorating and lacks safe pedestrian travel with. This bridge is a major truck traffic route for logging in the Haylen Valley, a lifeline for the industry, and each year it continues to support heavy truck traffic while deteriorating. The pedestrian paths on each side are narrow and unsafe for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And additionally, we have shared many pictures of the bridge being hit by debris during high-water events in our community. We asked, we have asked why ODOT plans to spend nearly $1 million to treat rust and paint the bridge when clearly their reports show the bridge is in poor structural condition, structurally deficient, and seismically vulnerable. We feel that the use of the taxpayers' money would be wasted to remove rust, replace rivets, and paint this bridge. We would like ODOT to postpone the minimal repairs slated to complete and to put this bridge in the upcoming STIP for replacement." So, I did this on behalf of, we contacted ODOT, our, our regional representatives, and they said to send this in the comment section of the newest STIP because the Act will only get you so far. The meetings, the area commissions on transportation will only get you so far, and the bridge people and the transportation commission need to hear statements like this because they basically, the bridge guys are in a office designing bridges, they don't really care. They don't, they aren't affected, they don't see how it works or anything. What's interesting is our ODOT representative had just tried to do the CZ Trail and connect with the Vernonia Trail over the bridge. So, he was like, "I know what you're talking about, I've been there, I was just there last weekend." So, this is the update of what we've sent in. They had a Zoom meeting, the Northwest Act is meeting just via Zoom because there's like 50 people that are part of it. I missed the last one that was just a couple days ago because I was doing other things in the office. And so, the plan is that we're gonna attend all of those and keep people thinking about that ultimately what this bridge needs for more than just us, but the trail connectivity, the safe route to schools, and good safe pedestrian access that gets people across the river without, um, kind of the sketchiness that it currently has.
So, I'd like to thank you for doing that, Josette. I think you, I think you worded that quite well. And I'm not sure how the state of Oregon would respond to its use for log trucks, but I know they'd probably respond to the CZ Trail aspect of it. I think that's probably our best hope to get some movement going on that. So, I think you're heading in the right direction there, for sure.
So, one of the other things that our representative talked to us about is communicating with regional solutions and potentially if there's other partners, and it's not just all on ODOT, if the county with their CZ Trail connectivity could put money into a pot, and ODOT could put money into a pot. The more partners and connections you make, the more likely something they weren't planning on happening could maybe happen. So, that's kind of the route we're going, is communicating with other partners that also want to see something changed there and see if there's any ground to cover that could make us get closer to not having the Green Bridge be narrow and tight and on a blind corner and weird intersection and all of it.
Thank you, Josette. Thank you for getting our comments in on time today, too, so.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion on the Green Bridge? Okay, we'll move on to staff report. City Hall closure request.
Okay, so I'm bringing this to you guys. On behalf of staff, there's only really a couple of staff that are still slated to work this week of December. Just people have put in vacation requests. And so, there's a couple people that will just be here by themselves. But typically, we don't have, most of the time, our counterparts and other agencies are also taking this week off. So, we send out emails and try to do business, and there's not a ton of return back. There's only really kind of finite things we can do here with moving projects forward, our own work on that. So, that's one of the reasons. And then, there have been a number of people that have scheduled days off around the holiday, or they're traveling, or they're getting ready for stuff. And we are closed the 24th and 25th. And we won't be doing shut-offs on the 25th. As outlined, we always bump it to the next Monday if it's on a Friday, so. Because we don't want people shut off without water, so, over the weekend, and definitely not over a holiday. So, this is just a proposal that staff wanted to bring forward, and have you guys decide yea or nay.
Okay, thank you, Josette. Any questions from the council or discussion?
I have one, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Uh, Josette, what other staff would be on duty as far as Public Works, Parks Department, and is there any thought to giving those people the week off?
Well, so anybody can request from their supervisor to take the time off. There will be members of those agencies and police, they schedule, if they work the holiday week, they, that's already all scheduled, so they're on. So, there's typically some of each, but the problem is, is that for like Cassandra, as the receptionist, no one comes and pays their bill the 21st through the 23rd. And so, she's gonna just sit there. Um, and so, she would much rather request time off, but she can't really do that because that, she's the front counterperson. And so, um, that's why the request is that she could sit there and, we can pay her to just sit there and wait for the phone ring, but it never does that week of Christmas. Everyone's really trying to avoid the city in paying their bill if they haven't paid it because they've already spent the money on Christmas presents.
So, Cassandra does a good job, she's down there a lot of hours, so that's good that she gets a break, I think. But I was more, I was more wondering about our other staff, how many people will be on, not, not the police, I'm talking about our Public Works, Parks.
So, I haven't, I haven't looked at who's requested or been approved for, because that goes through Jeff as their supervisor. But there's always someone on for public work. Just like I'm here in town and they can call, someone could call me, chief could call me if we had some city thing go on, chief's on, Jeff will be available, and then Jeff will have staff, if he's not working the weekend, that's working that weekend. So, there's never really an off switch for, um, the department, the department head. Even if we're home, we're really still on.
Right, I get it, I'm just, I'm just curious if we can give everybody a break somehow, but it's probably not possible.
Well, and some of them, you know, depending on if this is their holiday or maybe their holiday is New Year's, they'll have worked it out with their supervisor to maybe be the guy that was willing to work this week and not on New Year's week, or not on their birthday week, or whatever.
Right, I get it, okay, thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to close City Hall for the week of?
Mayor Hobart?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Could we discuss changing the city council date, perhaps, and not just counseling, not just canceling our city council meeting?
We sure can.
I'm just curious what, what, what are our other councillors feeling about that?
What historically, how much work have we had to do?
I'm looking, hold on, let me see what we've done in the past here.
I know there's been several times we've canceled it.
Yeah, it's actually normal, pretty normal, too.
And the weird thing is, is we've had it the last two years, but it was in the teens week. It was the week of the 16th or 17th is when it fell, and not actually the week of Christmas. Hold on, let me go back there. Yeah, so we can't, the last time it fell this way was in 2015, and we canceled it. In 2016, we canceled it. But 17 and 18, it was in that teens week, so it was a week before Christmas, basically. I don't know if that helps, JR, I'm just looking at what I even-
No, it's fine.
No, it's fine. I was just curious how everybody was feeling about it. I don't know what our workload is. There's probably nothing we couldn't really push out. I think we only have to have a meeting once a month, right?
Right.
As far as my personal feeling, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, closing City Hall and canceling the 21st.
So would you like to make a motion for that, JR?
Well, are we done discussing it?
Uh, doesn't look like it. Counselor Webb?
So, you know, you always hear the complaint of, I called City Hall, nobody's there. I understand, you know, your experience, the workload's gone during that week, which I, I probably would agree with. But if somebody does have an issue, is, is there, is, because if we keep our regular recordings, they're just gonna, they're just gonna go to the person they think is going to handle it and, and there's not going to be anybody there that week. Is there a way we could change our recording and somebody monitors it? So they could be more timely with these people if they may have something they feel is important during that week. Uh, probably wouldn't take much staff time to, somebody to address it.
Well, probably what, we can easily change our greeting to just be a stop greeting and not send you to all the, um, menus. But probably what we would do is say, if you, you know, say something to the effect of, if you have a water leak or a public works issue, you may please call the non-emergency number at blah, blah, blah to dis, or please call dispatch. If you have a police issue, please call this. If you're worried about paying your bill, bills, you know, shut offs will not be happening the week of blah, blah, blah. Let people know like, hey, don't stress about it. Calls back on the 30th or something to that effect. I don't know that, um, I think we could easily have an employee check it. I don't know if that employee would have the answer in checking it, depending on what the, if we let people leave messages. Does that make sense? Like if it, the, if we slate one person to be the checker, but then they're not the one with all the information for the different departments, I don't know how helpful that is to the person. Like, hey, we got your call, but that person's on vacation.
Yeah, I just was, you know, if it was, you know, trying to think of how the public calls in on some of these things. You know, the checker would probably understand the importance of the call and then it, it might be, you know, they, they kick it up to you if they thought it was real important, so. Uh, it just seems like we should have some avenue of addressing, uh, public concern during that week and it, and, I mean, other than an emergency. And I guess.
This is the thing, um, like if it's a, I'm trying to think of an example that wouldn't just be okay to go straight to that department, like police or public work. Can you think of something that would be something in City Hall?
Well, what if it's building permits or people want to do that kind of stuff? They have to come through City Hall, right?
Yeah, well, we don't allow building in, that isn't already started between October 15th and April 15th and the flood plain, so there's not a ton of building permits going on. And then the building permitting, once it's a permit issued with us, that inspection's a call-in thing that they do with Northwest Code Pro. So it would just be the acceptance, it'd be three days that they couldn't turn in a permit, would be what it is.
So.
Like start, start a new one.
Did you say shut offs are the 25th? They have to pay it by, Josette? I really don't know, so sorry about my ignorance.
Yeah, so a late letter goes out after the 15th if they haven't paid it. And then shut offs are typically the 25th of each month. If they haven't made a payment arrangement.
And they can pay online, correct?
They can.
Okay.
And typically by shut off day, we have the same probably six to eight households on shut off day that didn't pay attention to the reminder letter and kind of are just in a state where they're constantly in that position. We don't have a ton of people.
Right. Well, with the holidays, if somebody did come in and then the holidays and all that, family and traveling, you, you think you can give them a couple of days once you're back in to make that up and not hit them the first day?
Well, so the tricky part with, the always tricky part with Christmas and New Year's is that if I give them a couple of days and I'm shutting them off the day before the City Hall is closed for New Year's Eve.
Right.
So typically those people, and we do take payment arrangements. I mean, someone could call and say, I, I'm able to pay $50 and I want to break the bill up over my next three months or something. So we're pretty, I think there's very few people that, um, couldn't just make a payment arrangement and not have it shut off until a little bit later. But we could say something to the effect on a message that helps clarify they're not, you know.
Right, they're not.
Someone's coming to shut you off when we're closed, basically.
Exactly. All right, that's, that, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other discussion?
Do you guys want to amend your motion to include a greeting that gives kind of a rundown of how people can get services while the building's closed or something?
That would be good.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the closure of Vernonia City Hall for December 8th, December 21st and December 31st. And we would, and also to leave a voicemail or change our message on the machine to let people know how to contact department heads in emergency and that their water will not be shut off.
Did I hear you say December 8th?
He meant 8:00 AM, I think.
Oh, okay. Anyone like to second that motion?
I probably messed that up. Sorry about that.
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Hi.
Counselor McNair?
Hi.
Mayor Hobart?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Hi.
Counselor Wagner?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Business from the departments. Is Chief on the call tonight?
He's not. He had a family thing and was unable, is unable to call in tonight.
Okay. Public Works on the call tonight?
No, I did talk with Jeff about coming quarterly and doing a kind of departmental update. So he's going to be working on that and he'll come to your January 1, one of your January 1s.
Oh, good.
Probably the second one.
Okay, thank you. Orders and resolutions. Okay. Correspondence, elected essentials flyer. Last page.
This is brought to you guys from me, um, asking if there, or just I guess letting you know that there's elected essentials workshops still. Um, they're holding them virtually. And if there's any of these dates, um, that you would like to attend one, please let me know and I will get you signed up.
I'll have to, are there any Wednesdays, Stephanie? Because I'm driving a school bus again and Wednesdays I have a day off.
Looks like December the 2nd is a Wednesday.
What region are we, Beth?
We're Region 1, but they said that we could schedule it a different day if we needed to.
Okay.
I could do the 2nd of December.
All right, I'll get you signed up.
Okay, thank you.
Is it legit to extend it to be the councillor elect or do we have to move into office first?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Is it, is it appropriate for us to extend these to the councillors elect or we have to wait till they're sworn in?
No, they will have it extended to them.
Thank you.
City administrative report.
Okay, so I also sent this to you guys in the email. Sorry, it's late. So the bid docs will be out to potential bidders by this Wednesday for the trimming estimates for the walnut tree. We signed the franchise agreement with Blue Mountain Network, so that's in place now. So for overall city tree project, Wook did their part and topped the danger trees on the linear trail last Wednesday and Thursday. Um, once our city employee gets back, which should be mid this week, um, he will be cutting the remaining danger trees and dropping them on the linear trail, the ones that weren't risking the power lines as well as any, um, holes that West Oregon left up. If they take those down, so those will be potentially available for firewood. So we're going to put a little blurb out as an announcement that how someone could come in and access, uh, a waiver and potentially how they could access the wood if they wanted to cut it up for firewood because we have had some interested people. Which is also helps us because it takes some of the debris out of the way for them to take it for firewood. Steph's going to be putting, uh, an article in the December edition, the first December edition of Vernonia's Voice to inform the public of the different arborist reports that we've had done. So that when we go to cut the cottonwoods down and log or a bollmeyer, it will not be kind of a, why didn't anyone tell us? At least we'll have done our due diligence to get the information out there that these are an insurance risk and there's issues and that's why we're, um, removing trees. And also the request for bids to log or a bollmeyer will be out to potential bidders this Wednesday also. The goal would be that the bids would close that first week of December kind of simultaneously with the article coming out and then logging would follow that. So that no one's kind of surprised, um, or we've done our best to not have the public be surprised. Um, the cottonwoods, we're going to have city staff drop them and then we have someone that's willing to just, um, city staff's going to drop them and buck them and then someone's going to remove the logs for us and we'll just remove the branches and debris. And then I've been talking to Maggie who's working up a plan to do some planting on the riverbank, but that probably won't be until next spring. And then the, the restoration part of the riverbank may not happen until next summer. Um, in the 90s, they ripped rap that edge of the riverbank. And as you can see, when the water's really low, there's a lot of the rip rap rock that has kind of flowed into the middle of the, uh, rock crease there. And so we're working with Division of State Lands to see how much of that we can remove and then what we could do to stabilize that bank with something like that, but not have it roll into the river when the high water events happen. So that's a next year kind of project. I've been pricing out larger, um, species of trees that are not affected by felinus from Super Trees and I'm working with Steve Whiteman, um, to see if there's anyone that would like to donate a memorial tree up there, similar to how they donated trees for Spencer Park, to maybe get a few, um, 10 to 12 foot cedars and potentially some, um, some Aspen up there, just some different things that won't be affected by the disease that we know is in the dirt currently. So we had two water main leaks, um, in last week. Um, one was the city's repairing or has repaired both of them. There's one off Rose Avenue that's been repaired and is complete and closed up. The one off Juniper is causing us a little bit more trouble. It was concrete asbestos and it had cracked underneath the valve. And where it, we need to cut back to, to properly fix it is a little bit in that fog line of the highway. So they stopped short of digging into that and they're, they have it all barricaded and plywood over it and to, but they're hoping to get that done by Friday. But if you drive by there and you see a whole bunch of barricades and plywood and what looks like somewhere is a big hole, that's what that is. Um, we're still waiting in line for the contractor to show up for the play shed roof repair. They're just kind of going down their customer order list and, um, they gave a good bid, so we're not pushed too far to the point of wanting to find someone else yet. But we're like, are you ever going to show up and do it? Um, some good news, we did get an email, um, from ODOT that we got the $100,000 that we requested for the small city allotment grant. Um, that will allow us to pave and install pavement at the end of, south end of Weed Avenue, Spencer Avenue and Alabama Avenue. And then the STIP section, I went through that with, um, you guys on the Green Bridge update, but I just kind of told you about the mayor and I on the presentation call. So the last item on my list is the CARES Act funding. We still are stuck trying to get things that are backordered or not even available to us. So I'm trying, I wanted, um, to pick your guys' brain on how much do we move on this in the next 30 days? If I can't get it, what are you guys proposing me to do or where are we at? Because I can't really, luckily JR brought me some hand sanitizer, um, what do you call them, dispensers and some to put in Anderson Park because that was a concern of one of the Parks Committee members. But I still don't have, like, I still can't even get the hand sanitizer for City Hall. I have the stand that holds the mechanism, but I can't get the dispenser or the bags of it. And then I'm trying to find, I've found hands-free faucets that work with batteries, but they're really low priced and the reviews are really bad. So I'm trying to figure out how much of this, are you, what are you guys adamant we try and get? And what are you okay if it, we can never get it? Because I feel like I'm kind of hitting my head against the brick wall and searching for these items that everyone in the nation is searching for. So I wanted to kind of get feedback from you guys on what of these things do you see as being, um, super important and then maybe in only certain places? I don't know.
Mayor Hobart?
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Josette, I can readily get the soap dispensers, hands-free and paper towel.
Joe said I can readily get the soap dispensers, hands-free and paper towel dispensers. If you need the contact, how to get those, I can certainly share that information with you.
Okay. Well, most of our, most of our paper towels are already hands-free. So it would just be the soap dispensers. And then I don't know what we do with all the stock we have of, I'm wondering, are the hands-free dispensers, they must not be universal because our soap, I know, isn't universal.
Yeah, that, the foaming soap lasts forever. It, I don't know, I put some in and never have changed them yet. So it's pretty crazy how long they last. But if that's what you were looking into, I can certainly help steer you in the right direction to get those.
Okay.
And I could probably get some more hand sanitizer, just pump ones. I don't think they make those in any hands-free that I know of.
Right.
I don't know about the faucet situation. That seems like a plumber should be able to get those, so.
Well, then that was my other question. So I called two different plumbing places and left messages saying, hey, we want to outfit, you know. I thought it would be a really good, you know, hey, come make some money off us. And no return calls. I don't know if plumbers are just like busy building homes with plumbing or I, I'm just like scratching my head and it's usually people that respond. But then we're having, we have a hard time finding people to even pour concrete. So it's like, are you guys adamant that we try and outfit everything with the hands-free faucet? Because I'm having a heck of a time finding sturdy enough ones where they're going to be public, if that makes sense. And who knows what people will do to them or try to do to them because they do crazy things in the public restrooms. But is that, or are you guys more concerned about it being hands-free soap and we already have hands-free paper towels? So is the turning on and off the faucet super important to you guys?
Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I think as long as we made a good faith effort to try and to secure these and if you're having difficulties, we don't, I wouldn't expect you to spend an enormous amount of time on this.
Josette, for the computers, can we order those through a company? And as long as we have them ordered by the 31st of December and then pay for them ourselves if we have to and get funding for them?
Yeah, so I, I think that's, I got to talk to Angie because the last I heard, our IT group was looking and they were backordered. So I don't know if they allow you to pay for them when there's something that's backordered, but I can check on that. If we can pay for them, we could always turn in a receipt, even if we get them later than 31st, would be the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd try to do it that way. At least we can get new Chromebooks, yeah.
So the laptops have not been ordered, is that what you're saying, Josette?
They have not.
You can't just go down to whatever, I don't know, stores where you buy computers, you have to do it on the internet or what?
Well, no, I mean, I could send, I could send someone out of town shopping, but that's not typically how we, unless they're driving the city car, we're paying for reimbursement for mileage. And typically, go on shopping excursion.
So we have, do you have something to say?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
We tried to purchase them through Best Buy and they will only let you purchase one. So we canceled that order because one doesn't do us any good. We did try the regular big box stores.
I mean, I'm happy to keep looking for those. That's not an issue. And maybe there'll be some Black Friday deal or something where somebody's been, some big box store has been hoarding and then we can get five or six of them.
Josette, was there a certain tie that you're looking for? Or was it just the value?
We were looking for Chromebooks. Because it uses the platform that the city uses, which there's, I don't know, five different brands that produce Chromebooks.
And have you gone, I mean, it's not, take this offline, I suppose. I'll send you a couple of bits of information.
The other thing we were trying to do is not totally get ripped off. So when someone wants $1,000 for something that should cost $300, it's a hard pill to swallow. And I don't know that we'd get reimbursed for something that's exorbitantly priced. So that's also a concern. Because they don't want us to buy it and pay a big price. And then when we turn in for reimbursement, they're like, well, this thing should have cost you, I don't know how they're going, I don't know how they reimburse or how that even works. But usually you have to prove what you're buying is legitimate or, you know.
Thank you, Josette. Any other discussion or questions for the city administrator?
I had one, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
I'm just curious, Josette, how's Nickerson Loop coming along?
Great now. Our catch basins finally arrived. They've been on a truck for like three weeks. I don't, we could have ordered other catch basins, but we didn't want to have distant, we wanted all of them to be the same that we're used to in our system. So they just, they just got them. So they're going to finish putting that in. The public part, the part on the property owner's land has been done since October. But it's really just the street cut and then the sidewalk along Mr. Schrader's property there that is not done yet.
Got it. Thank you for that update. Have you received POs, you had them to log on Mills?
No, I just sent my NOAP, so I'm waiting for them to, the e-notification version. So they have to review it and then send me a number and then I can finish, finish up getting the POs for the pulp and for the fur.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Josette. We're going to move on to items from the mayor or councilor.
Dell is doing deliveries in February.
Pardon me?
What?
Sorry, never mind.
Okay, we're moving on to the next item. Items from the mayor or councillors and/or councillors. Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I walked down Webway and inspected West Oregon Electric's work. They took out a lot of, lot of the trees. Tim's not going to have a whole lot to address down there. Pretty much anything that leaned towards the trail, they took out. So they did a good job. Everything's cleaned up. The trail's clean. So, you know, there's plenty of firewood there though, so somebody can. I also walked through and looked at our tree plantings in there down around the man-made wetlands. And our survival in there is pretty poor. I went in there last year and found what I could and ribboned them so I could come back and look again. I should have had my counter with me to count them. But pretty sparse. That's probably something for council to have a discussion about in the future. You know, we have some pretty good piece of land there that we want to make sure we're growing the next timber crop. 30, 40 years from now, the city could have a pretty nice little windfall there if we get our ducks in a row and get some trees growing. It's going to take a little more of an effort. And that's why we're going to have to probably spend some money to get a return. That's why we probably should have a workshop on it. And that's about it for me.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Any other councillors wish to contribute or discussion?
Just to follow up on Counselor Webb's statement there, I think we still have some more planning to do in there from, from the sewer project, if I'm not, if I don't remember right. Maybe Joe Sack can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, we do have planning to do. The issue is, is that it's a really nice wetland where we should plant. And maybe that needs to be part of the discussion is, do you move dirt around to plant there or do we keep it? Because I don't know that little trees will grow when the winter comes and waters all around them. We did plant, I think, five some acres of, originally. Although we didn't spray because everybody, there's all that, there's a lot of controversy on spraying. You know, some people will say it only affects what it hits. Some people worry about it leaching into the ground. So they just planted, but they didn't spray, which may have led to the survival rate not being good because the competition, the brush and stuff took over and the little trees couldn't compete. So that might be another kind of decision to make.
I thought you told us that Peel was going to spray or did that get canceled?
No, I don't think, his bid never included spray.
Oh. Yeah, that wetland down there from, you have to correct me if I'm wrong. We had to move some dirt around there for the sewer project. It looked like a better pond than what they spent $500,000 building for the school.
Yes, it does.
So I think that is a good idea to have a discussion on planting around it instead of trying to mitigate a pond that's already there. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, JR. Any other discussion? Yes, well, if not, we're ready to move into action. Item summary.
Okay, so I have that. City Hall will be closed the 21st through the 25th. And staff is directed to prepare a greeting with contact info for citizen issues and which department, numbers they can contact someone to help them. Public Works is going to be doing an update at the second meeting in January for the Public Works Department. And we're ordering the laptops, even if we pay for them now and don't get them till later. And that's what I have.
I'd like to add to that, that you're going to do some work on trying to set up that communications for the council, next council meeting itself.
Right.
You're going to try and. Yeah. Could we know that possibly by, can I, can I finish what I was saying? Can we know that possibly by the workshop?
Know what exactly? What the alternative is going to be?
Yeah, if you have a good idea that you can do it.
Okay.
Yes, it wouldn't, shouldn't be too hard for me to figure that out.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. There's no other items. I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:45 PM.
Hold on, Mayor, hold on.
All right.
Sorry, we didn't schedule our meeting for the CA Quarterly Meeting Priorities and
So we made it for December 30th and you guys have determined you're doing it in person?
November 30th.
Sorry, November 30th.
That was November 30th. Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I thought that got on hold because we had to have a COVID discussion first.
No, we had it 6:00 PM.
6:00.
We have a work session Wednesday.
That's 7:00 PM online.
Okay, I just didn't know we had finalized that because Counselor Wagner wanted to talk about something before we talked about that for sure, so.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
That's okay. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:45 PM. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.